...
Board meeting to order.
November 12th, board meeting to order. Let's stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kelly Goldfall? Mr. Case Layell? Delayed.
He said he couldn't make it tonight.
Yeah.
Oh, excused. Ms. Lynn? Delayed. Mr. Akowski? Excused. Stadler?
Here.
Mr. Sang?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Mr. White? Excused. Matt, fire exits?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
So we're gonna start with our public hearing for the Smart School Investment Plan. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing. Second.
Okay. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How do we wanna...
Just briefly, the Smart Bond will be discussed in a board meeting, I wanna say the July, a July board meeting. And then I sent out both a... I sent a copy of the board meeting, or a link to the board meeting video, and also a copy of our overview of our Smart Bond proposal to the community a month ago in preparation for the public hearing. Just a couple notes about this. Our original Smart Bond proposal a few years ago was for instructional technology, but we decided that the process was too slow and that we wanted to get the tools in our students' and teachers' hands. And so over the last, really, three years, we've spent over $2 million getting the one-to-one Chromebook initiative, getting the interactive smart boards in all of our classrooms, and expanding our Wi-Fi. And so that was what, you know, our original Smart Bond was. We funded that through our own budget process. And so... And so we decided to pull that proposal and begin a new one. So we've been working with Tetra Tech, and we've been focused on security. And so the Smart Bond proposal that we are hoping to submit is for $2.1 million, focusing on upgrading our security cameras and expanding our camera... Our camera usage in the district, installing access control to our buildings, and then also integrating our public address systems into our security system. So these are all things that came from our security audit that happened a year and a half ago, and things that we've been trying to find ways to fund through our own budget, but it's really too large. And so we saw the Smart Bond as a way to do it. So... So that's just a quick overview. And we have folks from Tetra Tech, you know, if there's questions, but I think we can open it up.
Yeah. I mean, we don't have a... There's still no schedule or anything in terms of when the money would come. I don't know. Have any districts received money from the Smart Bond?
Yes, there's been some. That we have to go... For our timeline, we have to go through this tonight, and then it's one more step in the submittal process. So, you know, the state is always trying to... I don't wanna say expedite, because that would be the wrong word, but they're trying to review these, you know, in a more timely manner. So who knows? But I think... I think it would probably be a year and a half to two years, probably.
Yeah, right now it's tracking out to, you know, 16, 18 months, you know. But, you know, like you said, it is improving, but, you know, that's the timeline right now.
Are there any questions from the board or the public for that matter? We have...
Yeah, just a comment. I mean, once we submit, we should probably forward one to Julie Shorsh.
For Jonathan Jacobson's office? Okay, definitely. That's a good idea. Yeah. I mean, I think we talked about this at the last... Last time we talked about this, that we've sort of built into the idea of the plan that we won't be receiving the money for 16 to 18 months, and we can, at that time, get the latest and greatest whatever it is, given how quickly technology changes.
I think it should be noted that this means... This is work that otherwise might have to come out of our capital program. Not that much of a voice tonight, but it's a couple million dollars of work that is physical work in information technology and the security area. So that's a real step forward. And since we're also looking at another capital program that's in the development stages soon, this is $2 million worth of improvements we won't have to do, assuming this all goes through.
Yeah, good point. Any other comments or questions?
What... So there's a... There's, I guess, we're eligible for $2,183,414. So we're applying for almost 90-some... I have a percentage. But 90-some percentage of that, would it... I mean, since it takes so long to get it, should we just apply for all of it, or just... I mean, it's only 57,000 difference.
She's saying we are applying for all of it.
Some of it may be fees and stuff. We will apply for all of it.
Oh, we are applying for all of it? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Go to floor. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we're gonna move on to our workshops. We have three workshops tonight. The first is an interactive workshop with teachers that have gone through our responsive classroom training. And I guess we are gonna be the...
Yeah, so we have tonight Rebecca Tazan, Jen Kennett, what's her name? No, just kidding. Terry Lassito and Pam Sietoli, and from Glennon and Forest Hill Elementary. We... Teachers were trained across all four of our buildings, but they volunteered to come tonight. And so we were talking, and I was thinking about, you know, one more PowerPoint, and we decided to ditch that. And so, not that PowerPoints aren't good. They're very effective, but... So they're gonna lead us through some activities. So we're gonna change where we're sitting. Mike, who's filming, has been forewarned that he's gonna have to be a little creative with the camera tonight. So one of the hallmarks of Responsive Classroom is a morning meeting. Responsive Classroom is a... To call it a curriculum, it's more of a structure and a program that you really need to be trained in or, you know, to read about, to implement in your classroom. Really focuses on relationship building, social-emotional development in your classroom and community building in your classroom and across the school. We were lucky to have 21 teachers do a four-day training this summer. And each and every one of those folks came back very excited. We're looking for ways to, for sure, continue it this summer, but also to keep the training going this school year. But one of the hallmarks of Responsive Classroom is something called the morning meeting. And so we're gonna move our chairs out there and get in an oval, because I'm not sure a perfect circle will work. And they are going to sort of tag-team, I think, their way. They're gonna leave different parts of a morning meeting. And then they're gonna just also briefly share some aspects of the program. And they're available for questions and answers at the end, too. All right. Here we go. Yeah, try to kind of form an oval-ish. Yeah, yeah.
Dr. Landauer, you're not joining us?
Uh, yeah, I'm doing my chair.
Okay.
And I will be the one getting back to my headphones.
So one of the tools in morning meeting is the chime. So when you hear the chime, your eyes are on your teacher, and you freeze. So wherever you are, you stop and you wait for directions. Good morning, everyone. We'll be mocking this as a morning meeting. Okay, great. Okay, my name is Terry Lassito. I'm a teacher at Forest Hill School. I teach kindergarten. So this morning meeting board that you have here shows you the four components of your morning meeting: your greeting, your share, your energizers, and your message. All of the things that go around in the colors are the different activities that go with each component that the kids have learned to do since the beginning of the year. They're all Velcroed on. So as things wear out, we put different ones on. Zaoan is how to say good morning in Chinese. We have a student in our class that is Chinese-speaking dominant. And it was actually a suggestion by the children that we create a greeting that would be for her specifically. If you see the clips, at the end of every day, a child is chosen to come and choose what they'd like to do the following day. So today, Henry chose fist bump boom for tomorrow morning. His share is an around-the-circle share. The energizer is hands up, which you're going to see tonight. And then word turns is when you read the morning message. The children each read a word as you go around the circle. That's what word turns is. It's super-duper fun. So for the greeting, Pam and I are going to demonstrate what you're going to do. And we'd like you to please watch, because we're going to ask you what you notice when we demonstrate the hello neighbor. I just learned this. Fun kindergarten one. It's a fun kindergarten one. It looks like this. Hello, neighbor, what do you say? It's gonna be a wonderful day. So clap your hands and boogie on down. Give a little bump and turn around. So you're going to do it with your elbow partner. But before we do that, can you tell me what you noticed when we greeted each other? You can raise your hand. What did you notice?
You were mirroring each other.
We were mirroring.
Yeah, we were mirroring each other. What else did you notice?
We kept eye contact the whole time.
Engaging.
Eye contact shows respect for each other. What else did you notice?
You were smiling. Showed that you were happy to see each other.
Yes! We were smiling, because greeting each other is fun. And we look forward to seeing each other in the morning. Every day when we go to bed, we cannot wait to wake up to come back to school. Did you notice anything else about the give a little bump? What did you notice when we bumped?
It was gentle.
It was a gentle bump. It was. It was. So starting with Jen, she will be elbow partners. You will be elbow partners. You will be elbow partners. Elbow partners and elbow partners. If you would please stand up and face your partner, and we'll go through hello neighbor again. So it goes like this. Hello, neighbor, what do you say? It's gonna be a wonderful day. So clap your hands and boogie on down. Give a little bump and turn around. Well done. Well done. And we'll follow that up with a traditional handshake greeting. When we greet our neighbor, we turn, we face each other, and we say, "Good morning, Jen."
Good morning, Terry. Good morning, Rebecca.
Good morning, Jen.
Good morning, Sietoli.
Morning, Kristen.
Good morning, Alyssa.
Good morning, Kristen.
Good morning, Flora.
Good morning, Alyssa.
Good morning, Grace.
Good morning, Kristen.
Good morning, Craig.
Good morning, Sietoli. And that's an example of our greeting. We'll be moving on to the next component.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Absolutely. So Terry is our kindergarten teacher, as you can tell. So for third, fourth, and fifth grader, we kind of make it more, a little more mature, an adult-type greeting. So the handshake and different things like that. So there's kind of more K-2 things and more 3-5 things depending on grade.
I was wondering that.
And what's a favorite for 3-5, do you think?
Maybe fist bump or a... We do do some of the greetings in different languages in third grade. Kind of switch it up, too, so... And sometimes they come up with their own, not just ones that I give them, so... What's a microwave?
But again, reinforcing facing each other, smiling, eye contact.
Respect.
Respect for each other. While you're greeting and it's going around, everybody else is watching it come around to them. Morning meeting is such a specialty, I think, in the classroom, equaled by closing circle, which happens at the end of the day. And the kids will say that they've actually said the words. They feel filled with joy. And so such, you know, the change, like you're saying, it's not a curriculum. It's more like a we to a we-you. The gaming system internally changed so that you are restructuring how you were running your day and how you began and you ended with the teacher language and the engagement with the children. It's really, really special. And the tone in the room is beautiful. So I usually go right to an energizer after the greeting.
Okay. I mean, and I go in a different structure. I do my share and then go into my activity or energizer. So I'm Jen Kennett. I teach first grade. So this activity or energizer is a first-grade or K-2 energizer. And it's one that Terry's doing tomorrow, I see. It's called Hands Up. So it's a chant. You can vary your category that you're gonna do. We're gonna do... I teach fifth grade. If you make the category challenging, this will be appropriate for fifth graders as well. You just change the category to just a little bit something more, you know, advanced for them. Yeah. And the categories can be something basic, like animals. The category can be something more difficult or academic-related, such as your favorite book, or a book, or a nonfiction book, or name a fiction book. So what you do is, and I'll lead it, you're clapping after each part. I just wanna hold this up. Okay. So I'll demonstrate, and then we go around in a circle, and we name something from that category. So Hands Up. Put your hands up. For 2019, and then clap. Gonna name some colors. One piece. No repeats. No hesitation. No duplication. Starting with... And then after each person goes, you continue a clap, the double clap. So we'll do it again with everybody's participation. I'll lead it. Okay, ready? Hands up. For 2019. Gonna name some colors. One piece. No repeats. No hesitation. No duplication. Starting with red. Pink. Violet. Uh, orange.
Indigo.
Blue. Green. Black. Turquoise.
Magenta. Fusion.
Teal. And you go around one. Nice! Something I, with this... I had in mind, I was like, I'm gonna get indigo. No one's gonna do that. Well, that's what I was going to say. One thing that I tell my first graders is try to think of two things that you might say, just in case your choice is said before we get around the circle to you. So it really gets them thinking of multiple things, especially when it comes to books, because we've named one of our favorite books. And, you know, everybody has their favorite. A Cat in a Hat goes pretty quickly. So, yeah, that is the activity. And the activities are generally pretty fast, depending on the activity. So that's an energizer? This is, it gets to be considered an energizer or an activity. Sometimes the activity gets the kids up and moving. Sometimes it's something that's seated and something that the kids just interact with. Sometimes they hear... There's activities where they hear words, and they just have to stand up and spin every time they hear a word. So in K-2, they're pretty simple. But just to get them thinking, to get them moving. I'm imagining it's pretty easy to import, to start this type of thing in a kindergarten or first-grade classroom that they're pretty receptive to it. But if this is the first year, you have fifth-grade students who have been in school and haven't had that... I was actually a little bit worried about that. And then when I started doing it, they really enjoyed it. Especially, I think, being in a circle, getting to know each other, doing it the first day of school also helped build that respect in that community. And if you make them a part of it, I have found that they're more willing to give it a chance, especially, you know, games like this that normally they might think are a little bit silly. But if they come up with it and they're a part of it, they have ownership over it, and they have been loving it. And has it been a different sort of start to the year than a typical fifth-grade start to the year? Have you... This is my first year in fifth grade. But I have talked to other teachers about, you know, Responsive Classroom and how, you know, they used to start. And they have found, you know, doing morning meeting has built more of a community, more of a respect among the students, more kindness at that age, which is so important. And I think it'll build through the years. If they're seeing it so young in kindergarten, first grade, I think it's gonna kind of fold into the next year where it's just more respect, more kindness, more open discussion. My kids are even benefiting from the talking portion of it, coming up with the ideas and the topics to say and to share it and not be embarrassed to share your feelings and thoughts.
And the training for Responsive Classroom that we went through, it was run Responsive Classroom. So you started every single day in your morning meeting as adults. And it was a little bit interesting when you were first beginning, when you had a stand-up, hand-up, para with total strangers, which would be the same thing that would happen for children when they're starting school and they don't know anyone. By midweek, we looked forward to that structure of the day, because we were there from 8:00 a.m. until 3:30, all day, every day, with the same people, just like you would be in your classroom with your classmates. It was very awesome.
So what, how does this work? I guess maybe students having a little bit of a...
That's something that we'll talk about. The children have the opportunity to go to a refill station or take a break. So if a child doesn't feel ready to join, they can sit where they can still see. They can still hear. They're not participating. And when they're ready, they'll join. So there's a couple of different ways that teachers do dealing with that, but also with sharing. We have a Forest Hill Falcon. When the Falcon is in your hands, that's your turn to share. You always have the option to say pass. So if you're not feeling like you want to share or you have anything to contribute for whatever reason, you can take the Falcon and say, "I pass." And then it goes to the next child.
I think they look forward to it, too. So I feel like that's pretty rare, that they don't wanna join in. And most often, if they do say pass, they'll come back to it later on and they wanna share after. They maybe think of whatever it is that they need to share. And that's pretty common in my classroom, especially in first grade. They do need that extra processing time. And some of the kids, you know, you say you're coming to morning meeting, and they're a little hesitant, especially if they're having that bad morning. The second they see you start this, they're like, "Hey, I wanna be involved. I wanna share about that today."
I wanna be greeted.
I wanna do that activity. That's fun. I wasn't expecting that one, or maybe I was.
Do you see students prepositioning themselves? Like, "I want this person to be my elbow partner."
In my class, at least, they don't know ahead of time what the activities and the share are going to be. So they don't know when it's coming. So wherever they sit is where they sit, and they stay there, so... And I think they're pretty open to working, because we do this every single day. They're open to working with whoever's here.
And there are a lot of methods to parent children out, where you may pass out number cards and you have to find your number partner. Or at the kindergarten level, a capital letter and a lowercase letter A. You need to find your partner. That's now your partner. Or they'll wear sightboard necklaces. Mine needs to find mine. C needs to find C. So you can build your academics into everything you do within that 20-minute morning meeting can be highly academic and engaging. But it's so much fun. And that changes every day. So like Pam was saying, they don't know how they're going to be partnered.
So how do you decide which activity to do? Does the teacher decide, or do the kids decide?
When we started, at the beginning of the year, I was teaching them all of those in each of the areas. They learned them so quickly that I wanted to find a way to make it more interactive for the children so that they had more ownership over what they did. That's why I created this. So if you see the star, there's a blue star, a yellow star, a king star. Henry today was the person that I shook up in the box, So if you see the star, if there's a blue star, a yellow star, king star, Henry today was the person that I shook up in the box, pulled out a popsicle stick, his name was on it. Henry's turn.
He gets to choose.
And then he chose. So it was me, then we, and now the kids have the power over that.
Is that the me, then we, then you?
It is. It's like a gradual release of instruction, right? Yeah. No, we're ready for share.
Um, so share has really built a safe community in my classroom. My students have learned how to socialize with one another, be respectful, listen to one another. Um, it's really helped with classroom management because they are ownerships over their learning, especially in their sharing. They wanna be respectful and listen to each other. I found sitting in a circle really helps because everybody can be seen equally. We can see each other and everybody's accountable in the circle. Um, sharing, um, my fifth grade students absolutely love. They love to share something about themselves. It has gotten them to know each other a lot faster in my classroom, um, find common interests. Um, where before students might, may just stick to who they were friends with in third grade or fourth grade, but then they're saying, oh, there's other people in my class that I may not have been in class with together that have a common interest that I have. So sharing has really been a lot of fun. Some days, we don't have time for everybody to share and students understand that. And we might do a quick partner share or we might only be able to do three people. Um, but the important thing is everybody gets to be heard because even if I don't get to hear everybody share, they're at least sharing with one of their peers in their class. So there's different ways to do it. You can do it as a partner or you can do it as a whole group. And the most important thing that I taught my fifth graders is when they share something, they also have to share why and add on to it. So their peers can see why they may like something or why they did something. Um, so our share today is going to be your favorite book. So, um, I would start off by doing an example for my students. So my favorite book is The Bee Tree by Patricia Palaco because she speaks about the love of reading in the book. And then I would go to the next person. If someone's not ready, they can always say pass or skip. We can come back to you. And sometimes I just even give them a minute to think. We don't have to jump right in. Just, you know, think for a minute. And even, we don't even always have to start the same in the circle. I can always say to someone, does anybody have one to start off the circle and then we can go in a direction that way. So does anyone have a favorite book they'd like to share and why?
The Princess Bride is my favorite book because it is super exciting and has drama, it has sword fights, it has true love. And it takes you up and down and up and down and up and down all the way to the very end.
One of my favorite books is Because of Winnie Dixie by Kate DiCimello. And that is my, one of my favorite stories because, um, it's a book that I read, that I've been reading with my students every year. And most of them have not heard it and they love the story when, once they hear it and then we watch the movie at the end.
Uh, one of my favorite books is Charlotte's Web. And it, I read it by myself and I've read it to my kids many times and everyone's not proud.
I'll pass. Nobody have favorites?
Um, I'll pass. I can't really think of a book right now.
Um, one of my favorite books is All the Light We Cannot See. And I'm picking it because I've read it recently so I can remember. I can justify liking. Um, I just thought it was beautifully written and it's about World War II. It just interested me.
Uh, my favorite book right now is Calypso by David Sedaris. I love short stories and these are very humorous essays that are based on real, real life events and they're very funny.
I, I read a lot, so this is really hard. And I've been reading a lot of nonfiction, so that's even harder because it's not very fun, some around subjects that are heavy. But, um, uh, something I read recently, my daughter's dyslexic and she had to read a book for, um, her ELA project. And she wants something more complicated and so we kind of combined audiobook and then me reading to her. And we read Little Women, which I never read growing up, even though I'm a big reader, I just kind of skipped that. And it was so nice because it was like a big, long, kind of complex story. And it was just really lovely to have that experience with her and kind of follow those characters with her.
Um, my favorite book, I'm embarrassed that I may not have the title correct, but when you said Patricia Palaco, that made you think. The book she wrote about the principal, I think it's Mr. Lincoln's.
Mr. Lincoln's Way?
Mr. Lincoln's Way. And I think it came out when I was a principal and it was very inspiring about, uh, the impact a principal can have. So that's why I really liked that book.
So I was going to name a comic book, but it went that way, so I'm gonna do something else. So, no, I mean, I can name a regular book. The, uh, The Art of Mathematical Modeling, uh, I picked up at a used bookstore in Philadelphia, no, in DC. And, um, and I wasn't sure what this book was, was going to teach me. But it actually kind of refreshed my memory as to why we actually use empirical equations to represent, um, uh, systems in the environment. Or even, it was actually not specific for any specific modeling, just using math to represent, uh, how things work. So that you can use that to better do things. And it was actually a book about teaching the art of mathematical modeling, not so much what it was. So, so it was, so it was written by two college professors, two British college professors to, to teach other professors how to introduce, back in nineteen, it was a book from nineteen eighty-five. How to introduce that topic into the college curriculum. So it was dated, but it, but some of those, some of the, some of the things, um, some of the principles remain true to this day.
And I'm sure as a board, you can even, you know, see that you may have learned something about one another that you didn't know. And, you know, that's helpful, you know, when you're working together to find things that are different about each other that you might, might normally not talk about.
My favorite book is My Sister's Keeper. It's My Sister's Keeper. I just, I like, um, reading about, uh, different family dynamics sometimes when I read books. Um, I was having a really hard time because I thought about Charlotte's or, or Little Women because, oh my gosh, those are fabulous stories.
And we do something called Just Like Me. So as you were saying Little Women, I'm thinking Just Like Me. I love that. And so the children can do a nonverbal Just Like Me. As kids go around and they share, you're gonna see thumbs go up. Because they're making it a nonverbal connection of Just Like Me. And if I notice that you did Just Like Me and you did Just Like Me, I'm like, oh, you're just like me. And that's again, that connection. And as I watched all of you listening to each other, there was a lot of eye contact, there was a lot of nonverbal head nodding in agreement. Interesting. Teaching the kids how to communicate like that as well.
I did that one also in class and it was kind of to be a book recommendations for each other. A lot of them got ideas of like, oh, I never did that one before and they did try some new books out. So lots of different ways you can use that. My message. So the message is usually the last component that you do, um, for morning or evening. Um, like we said before, K two, three, five, you can tailor it how, um, it would meet the needs of your class. So I did a longer message. I teach third grade at Forest Hill. Um, I did a longer message tonight for us. And if you notice, there are some words that are capitalized in red because we're gonna read this together once, um, together. And then you're gonna try and come up with how to act out the words that are, um, in red, um, and capitalized. Um, and I actually did this, my students saw me doing this today. We've done this activity before and so we did it, I told them I was coming here tonight to talk about what we do in class. And so they gave me some ideas of what they would do to act it out and I said I would let them know if you did some of this. And they actually said, you should do that with the word crowd. So I made a quick little revision with their recommendation. So we're just gonna read it together first, um, and then we'll read it again and I'm gonna stop and you're going to try and come up with how you would act out those words. So, good evening, board members. Tonight you, you were able to see and feel how a typical morning meeting is run. Each day, our students enjoy coming together to share and participate with each other and their teachers. Feel free to stop by and visit our smart and strong kiddos and experience how we build our classroom communities on a daily basis. We are very proud of our classroom families. Enjoy your evening. Love Mrs. Kim, Mrs. Tassan, Mrs. Lucido, Mrs. Lucili. Um, so every day we have a message, um, that we start our day with. They, um, it could be posted in the room when they first come in, so that might be something they read ahead of time. There might be something on there that they have to answer and it could be something like a simple question that they're gonna put tally marks on. Um, and then you'll go over it later during the message portion. So, you ready? So tonight you were able to see, so how would you act out see? They did a lot of this. So you, tonight you were able to see and feel. Okay. How a typical morning meeting is run. Each day, our students enjoy coming together. They did like the, or they were like on each other. To share. And participate.
It's not a hard one.
I was jumping like a crazy. Even though that's hard sometimes. With each other and their teachers. Feel free to stop by and visit our smart and strong kiddos and experience how we build our classroom communities on a daily basis. This is the one that they said I had to change. We are very proud. Of our classroom families. Enjoy your evening. You can do that however you want. You can make it about a lesson that you're gonna do today. Maybe something simple, like a change in the schedule that you wanna tell them about, um, how would you want to do it?
So there's, there's lots of, there's lots to this, but there's two other kind of big components they were trained on. One is, um, teacher, the power of teacher language and the other is logical consequences. And so we were gonna just briefly touch on that and, and then, you know, you guys have already been doing it, which is great, but just if you have any questions, um, about this or. I see you have the logical consequences.
I request the posters. So logical consequences, um, they need to be respectful, related and realistic. We call it the three Rs. Um, so respectful consequences focus on the child's behavior instead of their character. So it's more, um, teacher language, the way you are trying to help and, um, correct behavior. For example, if a child is, you know, not saying something very kind to somebody, you reflect on that with that child and say, how can we fix that behavior? What could you say instead, instead of focusing on that, um, child's character, oh, stop being a bully kind of thing. Um, the consequence needs to be related to the infraction. For example, you draw on your desk, you need to clean up your desk, it needs to be related, which goes along with it being realistic as well. Again, with that desk, um, piece, it needs to be something that they can reasonably do, they can reasonably fix. So sometimes there's a discussion piece to it and sometimes there is a reparation piece to whatever it is that you're, um, you're working on. Do you wanna talk about these?
Yeah, so also there's, um, logical sequence, uh, consequences, sorry, logical consequences. Um, so if you break something, you fix it. Example would be you spill your water bottle on the floor, you go get a paper towel, you clean up the water. You know, accidents happen, we just need to fix them when they happen. Um, a loss of privilege would be a temporary. You're lying later for that day and you're not responsible with that job, so you would lose the job just for a day. It doesn't mean you lose the job for the whole week. You just need to reflect on, you know, how you can do better in that job and then you would earn the job back. And then time to refill and reflect is what we talked about before, um, especially in morning meeting. If you need to take a break and, um, remove yourself from a group activity or something that we're doing. Um, you just remove yourself, get yourself together and then you can come back to the group and be ready for morning.
And then the teacher language part, um, the support part of it too?
The teacher language part was a shift and we're actually really hoping to have more training in that area. Where you want to build that intrinsic desire in the children, you want, you want it to come from within them. So, for example, wow, I really like how you colored that paper. What I think shouldn't be relevant in what they do. And I wanna say that, I've said, I like the way you're walking in the hall or I like the way you're sitting quietly. Taking I like out of the equation and noticing the behavior. So that you're commenting on, I'm noticing quiet feet in the hall. Or I see that you're using a lot of colors telling me about what you're doing. And commenting on what you see instead of giving them feedback without actually telling them what they're doing well with. If they're using, stretching out their sounds to do their writing or putting spaces. Instead of saying, I really like the way you're writing in your journal today, you're not giving them any information about what strategies they're using. I noticed that you have spaces between your words. It's easier for people to read. I noticed that you're taking your time. It makes it more legible. Um, so noticing behaviors and using reinforcing language for that.
Um, I was just, yeah, I was just gonna say, and a lot of the language that we used here about Just Like Morning Meeting, for example, greeting and sharing. And as they are starting to do this in kindergarten, then by second, first grade and second grade and so on, they're used to the same type of language. They're used to the same type of expectations. Um, so by the time, if, you know, by the time they get to fifth grade, they've done this for six years, they know what to expect and it's kind of become routine for them.
We're excited to see it roll out as the years go on and this becomes very ingrained for them. They know when they arrive, we do something called a soft start in the morning. So when the children come in, they can choose whatever they'd like to do to begin their day. And they have that twenty minutes from eight forty to nine when the bell rings while we're waiting for bus students. Or we're waiting for breakfast children to come down to the classroom. It's really interesting to see the choices that the children make. Some kids will go quietly and just read in the library. Other kids want to socialize with each other and they'll sit and they'll color and they'll chat. Other kids that are super driven to get their work done will choose to do a have-to or any work that maybe they didn't finish the day before. And they'll get themselves going on that. They soft start every morning. They can't wait to come to school. And one of the issues that we're having now is that sick children are coming to school because they don't want to stay home and they give their parents such a hard time. Because they might miss something awesome in school and they don't wanna miss. I think that had I done this in years past, I wouldn't have had a problem with tardiness. Because the kids want to be there for their soft start so that they can manage it. My breakfast children that would linger until time after nine where they're already missing a half an hour of school. My kids are up there at eight thirty, they're done eating by eight forty, they're in the room by eight forty-two. It's amazing. It really is. And that's that inside gaming system change. So it was just a shift on how you started. If I was coming in to do morning work every day, I get it. Ugh, not that fun. So at our age, you know, starting it like that gives the choice again in their hands and they feel empowered. It's amazing. And then we chime at nine.
With the teacher language, is that something that, one thing you said was sort of a collective, I notice quiet feet in the hall. But when you do the call out of something like, you know, I notice the spaces between the words, is that something you say privately or is it something you say more publicly? And is it to just kind of reinforce?
Privately, more often when you're conferring with your kids, when you're talking, unless you're noticing something in the hall, then you're saying it publicly, this is what I'm noticing. Unless there is imminent danger. If there is danger involved, you're going to correct that behavior immediately.
I think it also depends on why you're saying it. So are you saying it because you're trying to compliment? Are you saying it because you need to correct something? So I think it depends on the purpose and maybe the student, like, you know, if you know that you may even be complimenting a student who may be embarrassed no matter what, you would do it privately. So I think it depends on the situation.
She just, sorry, I was gonna say, but a lot of times if you are complimenting or commenting on someone's behavior in the line, a lot of times other kids like.
Yeah, I was wondering if it had that impact, that it's so, instead of calling out bad behavior and making someone small and.
Setting an example, it's, you know, when you notice, oh, I see like this one, this one, this one, wow. You know, they, they, they notice that and they, they fix themselves too.
So, so the purpose of the, I mean, it's interesting, but, um, I'm just not clear, is, is the purpose to make a positive observation? Uh, and then, but not say that, not use the word like? I mean, for you, the observation may be positive, but for others may not be. So like, how do you navigate through that?
There's a great book called The Language of Learning and that's one of the books that they introduced at the training. It's a good book and it takes you, I wish I had had it as a parent when my children were younger. It really makes you rethink the way that you respond to different things. It really encourages you not to say, oh my gosh, Pam is doing such a great job. If you wanna be just like Pam, then you're gonna put spaces between your words. Now, I'm not putting spaces between my words and so I'm looking at Pam and I don't wanna be like her. I'm mad at her right now because she's being elevated. It takes that piece away if you're noticing behaviors, actions, if you're talking behaviorally, academically. The kids need to know what they're doing right, not that you like it. So if they're striving to improve at, um, using punctuation marks and you notice that there's punctuation marks at the end of their sentences. And you ask them to explain that to you, it brings that thinking back to them.
And specific feedback taking your opinion out of it.
So they're not pleasing you.
Right, right, they're intrinsically motivated rather than externally. Right, and they, uh, kids want to please their teachers and that's normal. I wanted to please our instructor when we were learning at responsive classroom. We fall into those roles. It, it's a, it's an adjustment, like it's a mind adjustment that you have to make and you have to practice it. And reading that book is super helpful and we're all works in progress as we go along with what we're doing.
So you were part of the pilot group that did this training. Are you, how is it? How, how does our other teachers, our colleagues coming up to you and asking you about it or are they noticing a difference or are they, are they just, are curious?
We had, um, in March, there was a, an initial training for, uh, conference day where we had a bunch of teachers. It was more, it was probably ten maybe from our school who got like the one-day training and then it was almost kind of like a fight of who got to go over the summer. Um, so five got to go over the summer, but there's, I think, at least in our school, that's very well received. And a lot of the other teachers would like to go to this next, the next rounds. Cause you really do need to.
Participate.
You need to go to one of the trainings. It's, it's great to hear about it and read about it, but you have to like be immersed in it for those four days to really understand and to learn it.
And in our school, um, the teachers, a lot of teachers did go to that training as well. So they got the introduction and a lot of teachers have taken it upon themselves to read the books and ask, um, the ones who were trained, um, questions or how they can build on and.
And we've also been running our faculty meetings, um, the teachers that were trained over the summer were starting this way. So they can see specific examples and, you know, have like a little workshop on it, um, during, you know, the times that we can meet together.
And I think the morning meeting piece has taken off more in our school, even among the, the teachers who were not formally trained. Cause that is, that is a great way to start the day and I think the teachers are starting to see that. And then I think the other parts and pieces such as the language and the consequences and the closing circles even, I think that'll come as they get the training or more understood to the public.
But you're seeing elements of it. But you're seeing elements of it seeping in even in classrooms where the teachers aren't trained.
Yeah, I think everybody is doing, at least our principal said the other day that it's like, everybody is doing a morning meeting.
Even like our reading AIS teacher, she only sees them for a short period of time, but she's just trying to even do like the first couple of minutes of just a quick, you know, share or get to know each other, a quick morning meeting together just so they feel connected to each other, the same that they do in the classroom.
What do you think that makes fear or misconception of this? Cause it's, you know, obviously something that was not something that the teachers came to us asking to do, but rather something that the, that's been, not for lack of a better word, imposed. I think, you know, if everyone could adopt to do it, but do you think that if there's any resistance, where is it?
I would say just, almost every minute of the day is taken by something. That I, so I think that one misconception would just be, how can I fit that in? How do I possibly have time for that when I have to be doing this for this long and this for this long? I have to fit in science and social studies. But it really is like fifteen minutes. I mean, and maybe even shorter for the younger guys depending on how long they're gonna sit or longer. But I would say it's not that long and it's worth it to...
Sounds like you might actually gain time.
Oh, definitely, absolutely. Well, and that's one thing that I, that she said that stuck with me at the training was kids are always gonna find time to talk. So if you give them time, structured time to talk and if it's sharing about their weekend or whatever it is, that will help later on so that they're not, you know, chit chatting during math time or things like that. And it kind of, you, you start out on a good, on a good note, so.
Is there an age where, where this type of instruction taps out?
You could do this up until it just changes the structure.
I would do it, I would do it.
They, they've just developed, they've just developed a middle school model. When I, I would, I did this at a school where I was the principal and the middle school was right next door to us. The middle school principal and I were friends and she came down one day and she said, oh, the fifth graders from here, school are asking, why aren't we doing morning meetings? And so, you know, who knew, you know, we're kinda trying to take this one step at a time. We're trying over the next few years to train as many elementary people as we can. And we need to learn more about what it might look like in middle school, but I do know there are some middle schools that attend versions of this. And the circle work that we're training teachers in, the restorative practices stuff is, is like this, so.
My friend works for a huge tech company, really big tech company that was hiring a lot of people. And this is, she was a teacher trained in something like this and this is her job. She goes around the world and does circles and crafts. Because what they were noticing is a lot of programmers that are pretty low EQ and, but they needed to develop teams and the ability to communicate with the communities and so I think there's no way to tell that.
So are these methods being taught like at the university level to teachers or future teachers?
I mean, not specifically responsive classroom, it's kind of a, an organization, it's a nonprofit that manages all this training. But I, I think their training model makes a lot of sense to teachers and you all talked about it. And I did it when I was a principal with my whole staff and we've gotten really positive response, so we're gonna do it that way. But I will say, you know, eight or nine years ago, I was skeptical of it myself and kind of thought that was the touchy feely thing and, and I'm, A, a convert to it because I saw the impact it had on my school. But then there's been some really powerful studies done that show academics just going through the roof when teachers do this. And, and I saw it myself when I was a principal, it was a struggling school and, you know, tests and whatnot. And when we literally started doing this and academics just started really rising. And I think it was mostly because of this, cause it kind of gave focus, kids connected more.
And you can throw academics in there, like I can find, it's a great way to review something really quick that we're gonna do later on in the day that I might not have had that extra five minutes for, but I can find a way to throw it into this.
And I don't feel that it was imposed whatsoever. It's, I've been teaching for a long time and thirty-two years. It has been a lot of years since something as amazing as this has come along. And when you are introduced to something like that and you have the opportunity to participate and become immersed in it, for teachers are lifelong learners and we're always thirsty for the next great thing. This is a game changer. It's a game changer in the classroom, it's a game changer for the children. I go in with both feet pretty much if something really piques my interest. I think that for us and for our kids, this is huge. And if we can continue the training, you know, for the people who haven't been trained, they want the initial training. For those of us who have been trained, it's just the tip of the iceberg. There's so much more that we want the next piece. We want the next piece of the training and we want to spread the word and be a part of sharing with our colleagues so that they can start. Greeting, or the morning meeting is a beautiful thing. Closing circle, you guys all do closing circle too, is amazing. It's amazing, every day you end in the same fashion. There's a share, maybe something that made you smile today. Someone who might have helped you today, something you feel proud about.
Eyes and bows.
Absolutely, and we start with a poem and they, I thought it would be too leggy for them, but they had it memorized by the second week of school and these are four and five year olds. So it goes like this. The time has come to say goodbye, we've learned a lot today. Some of us will go, meaning they'll go up to bus or to daycare or to after school program. Some of us will stay, but we'll all be together tomorrow to work, to learn, to play, to have fun. And then they do, to be in our kindergarten community. And that's how we end every day. They recite it, it, oh, it's just so cute. It really is and then some of the kids go and everyone says, bye, see you tomorrow. And when we talked about why they loved the closing meeting, they said that the most important part for them was knowing that we'd all be together tomorrow. And it made leaving okay. And that's responsive classroom.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you for participating.
Do this tomorrow at work.
So, thank you guys again, that was really, I've heard a lot of teachers talk about their, their experience with responsive classroom and how it really has changed their approach to teaching and it's great to actually experience it rather than just hear about it. So thank you for coming out tonight.
That was, that was great.
Yeah, it was, we need a lot more of that.
Yeah, it was so nice for us to have it happen this way too because...
You really don't understand it unless you're still living it a little bit. So, thank you for participating. We'll be back next week. You are welcome, open invitation, if you ever wanted to come and join a morning meeting in our classrooms or a closing circle, you are more than welcome to come.
Thank you, thank you so much, have a great night.
So next up is Mr. Archer from Sargent with his presentation.
Good evening, thank you. Can we get the chairs and line up and just do it? I, I don't think I wanna beat that. But I was jotting some notes down as I was watching that. And just to sort of piggyback everything that got said, what I've seen is a lot of these strategies, a lot of these practices allow students to share who might not always want to share or be confident enough to share. And all our students have lots of experiences to share. This helps kids engage, connect. Our teachers do a lot of modeling and practicing of expectations that we want. It leads to collaboration and how to work in groups and towards goals and how to communicate with each other. Meanwhile, it's all about affirmation of our students as people, they get a voice. And each classroom is a community within our school community. Classroom expectations are displayed with the teacher language, action verbs and it's good passive reflection for all of us as well. Anyway, Sargent School. As you know, we are pre-K of fifth grade. Currently for the nineteen-twenty school year, we've got two hundred and ninety-one students and that equals out to about seventeen and a half students per class. I don't know where the other half of students is, but... When I put the slides together, I, I wanted to support the board goals and Dr. Landall's goals for the district because they are important and I included some pictures as well. This is a picture of our Miss Lusowski and Miss Panko's second grade class. In terms of this board goal excellence, again, sort of just to piggyback a lot of the things I saw, we've had discussions at faculty meetings and grade level discussions on engagement. We start each faculty meeting talking about what our school vision is and how it relates to some sort of a best practice such as what we saw here, morning meetings, the refueling stations, the energizers, the movement rates. And we had, and when we had our first discussion of the school year, it was all about morning meeting being an expectation for every classroom in the building. And I asked every teacher in the, at Sargent to invite me in to see a morning meeting. And I believe I have visited every classroom on invitation, but I also visit classrooms just about every day and I see the morning meeting in practice in, in many of the classrooms. And to also reiterate what was said earlier, I, I would love to see more teachers get the training as well, that is important. Again, we've had dignity discussions at faculty meetings and grade level meetings. And again, we are doing our progress monitoring and having our data team meetings start up as well because academically, we wanna see all this work pay off so our kids can do a better job reading and writing and learning about history and science. This board goal equity, for us as a faculty, this one is a little bit more challenging to get our hands around. It's a bit more cerebral in my opinion. And I, I do believe that the, the team that is our equity team, three teachers and myself, we do need some more training. Our focus has been on how to make every student in the building feel connected and part of our community. And we've, we've created daily equity statements. And again, two specific practices that I, I've asked our teachers and teacher assistants to focus on are the morning meetings and at the door greetings every day. We've added clubs to our school this year, the book club and the math club. And going along with the idea of equity, we decided as a school and as a PBIS team to focus on character traits this year. And November, our character trait is being respectful. And that's a concept that kids hear all, they, they hear that word respectful all the time. Teachers say it all the time, I say it all the time. But the students, not all of them, but some of them look at us like they don't know what it is we're talking about. So we are doing our best to teach and demonstrating what respect needs to look and sound like in school. This is a picture of our pre-K Halloween celebration. We started off our Halloween celebration with a pre-K doing a little march and then we had a schoolwide march and a BTO sponsored snack for the building. It was a nice practice. Over on this picture is one of our second grade classrooms doing a morning meeting. And this one, if I remember correctly, they were doing a handshake that they had learned right before I took the picture. Board of Education, Board of Educational Goal Communication. Many of our teachers use ClassDojo. I, I utilize robocalls and emails, we have a monthly newsletter that we put out to the community. I have set up a Twitter account and if you're interested, our Twitter account is at Sergeant Stars. Positive things for the building. We have new playground equipment from our PTL, a spinner. And I had to create a recess schedule because the fourth and fifth graders were utilizing the spinner more than the second graders. So we had to come up with a daily schedule. And we have a building leadership team, which our first meeting is tomorrow night. And the goal, one of the main goals of the building leadership team is to learn concerns from the community and also to promote, to promote what is going on in a positive fashion at Sargent. That's, that's pretty exciting. I added this as a goal, just to share out. Community, I, I believe Sargent has a real positive spirit. And we're proud of that. And this is our Spirit of Beacon Day and one of our assemblies. And it was a pretty exciting assembly, the Beacon Fire Department brought fire trucks to the building. Again, to piggyback on the teachers' fine work before this presentation, Board of Educational Goal Culture of Care, big focus on responsive classrooms, the daily framework. We've set up a strategy from responsive classrooms called Buddy Classrooms where instead of taking the kids out of class when they're not demonstrating, you know, the action verbs that we want for behavior, they get a chance to go refuel in another classroom and then reflect and go back to their classrooms. Again, we're focusing on PBIS traits. We were asking teachers to do a lot of teamwork, collaborate and spend time demonstrating cooperative learning. We've added and we've done a lot of field trips earlier this year. This is our second grade going over the walkway of the Pecosie about a month ago. Our special education department created a sensory room in the building. And we're expanding our sensory garden and I believe our finest thing as a building is our Thanksgiving luncheon for our seniors. I believe that demonstrates our culture of care very, very well. And it's our fifth grade climbing Mount Beacon a couple of weeks ago, it was a nice day. And our Board of Educational Goals Sustainability. Large focus on recycling at Sargent. We have a collaboration with the other buildings do with common ground and many of our grades have begun their field trips and collaboration with common ground now. Again, we have new playground equipment, our PTL is sponsoring a new planting of a tree in our lower parking lot. We appreciate and enjoy the collaboration and support from our PTO. Again, sustainability-wise, we are continuing with Hudson Valley Seed and we've already had three assemblies this year on recycling and how to treat the environment. They've been very well received. And this picture is Carrie Russell from Dutchess County talking about recycling. And that's my presentation.
Thank you so much. Any questions, they're right.
Thank you, Ms. Archer. This is a different presentation from the past. Is Sergeant still allowed at school?
We're in good standing.
Good standing. Good. All right. Thank you very much.
I have a question. You mentioned wanting some additional training to take place. Could you elaborate a bit on that?
Equity.
Oh, yeah. What we're struggling a little bit with is how to start conversations as an equity team with the rest of the faculty. That's a little more challenging. Engagement, I'm not saying that's an easy one to do, but it's pretty concrete. You want to get the kids involved in their classes as quick as possible in a positive fashion. The idea of how do we get all these kids, you know, the same accessibility and so forth, that's something we're struggling a little bit with.
I'll just jump in on that real quick. The dignity framework training that we have all the principals doing and the people on the equity teams. It's a six-day training. We did two over the summer. We did one last month. And then we have three more. We have one next week and then the other two, I think, in the winter. And the first three trainings are kind of building your own reflections and, you know, your own understanding. The last, the second three days are about how do you take that to a wider audience? So I totally agree. It's a very challenging aspect of this work. And so the goal, I'm not gonna say hope, the goal of the second part of the training is to kind of, how do we put this in action with everyone in our building, or at least start? So that next one, I think, is a week from today, right? It's on next Tuesday. So we're excited and I'm excited to learn about how we kind of translate that. But it's been a powerful learning experience for everyone, but it's been very kind of internal, but reflecting on your own experiences and how they relate. And so we're interested to see what the second half of it brings. So we should hopefully be able to help with that.
There's a follow-up question to that. For the, I'm assuming there's a group of, this is probably more for, I don't know, who. If a group of people are doing the training and they're from different buildings, is there a way that they can communicate with one another about how they're processing, what they're learning? Is there any mechanism for you guys to do that with other people doing the training? Not just within the building?
We don't have a formal one. There's a ton of sharing when we're in the trainings, but that's a great idea to figure out a way for folks to share. I mean, that's actually come out of the responsive. The four teachers that presented tonight, when they were together last week planning this, they spent half the time like sharing classroom ideas, you know, or more than half the time. So we need to figure out ways for schools to share a little bit more. We have been sharing as a principal group every time we meet, but we need to figure out ways for the teachers to share more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have Laura Cahill from South Avenue School.
Hi. Thank you all for the opportunity to talk a little bit about South Avenue School and our plans for this school year. So in following along with the board goals that were adopted this summer, we're focusing on excellence in quite a few ways. For us and the teaching staff, we're really looking at assessments. When the school year started, the classroom teachers were able to have summer data through the state test scores and the quarter four reading scores to kind of go in. And then we took the beginning of the school year to do some developmental reading assessments and using F and Ps and running records. And within, by the time we started with October, we were already having our data meetings and talking about students who may potentially need some supports be it within the classroom with the adults that are in the classroom and within our staff that are able to support with small groups or individual supports. As I mentioned before, the meetings that we use are data meetings. We have RTI meetings and then we also do PLC meetings, which are professional learning communities when we meet in grade level teams. One of the things that our grade level teams are really great about at South Ave is kind of chatting with each other and visiting each other at the grade level. And what we're looking at is really trying to expand those classroom visits throughout the schools. So we actually have hosted some teachers from other schools, had our teachers go into other schools just to kind of learn about how things happen at that grade level in other buildings, which has been really great. We've been focusing on materials, so flexible seating. The top right picture, you can see some students choosing to work on the floor with their Chromebooks. That's something that we've definitely focused on for this school year in addition to classroom libraries. We want to create libraries with diverse characters and settings and time periods that reflect our students' experiences. You've heard a lot about responsive classroom and how we're using that with our own teaching staff is that before we were a PBIS-centered school, we would have whole school assemblies. What we're doing now is having grade level meetings so that everybody in a grade level will meet on a monthly basis and work on responsive classroom techniques and just learn to develop the community at the grade level. So we're seeing on the bottom left is our fourth grade team, meeting for the first time and the teacher giving a cue where they have to find somebody they don't know and sit next to. Bottom middle is a second grade team where they're learning about, learning how to express their energy through a Zoom game. And the bottom right is our very first faculty meeting where we had a snowball activity where the staff was asked what they were most excited for for the next day. And they wrote it down and threw it on the floor and then they came and picked another one up and read to the team what they were excited for. So it was a fun way to start and introduce responsive classroom to all of the staff. First students were really excited about the experiences that they are able to have here at South Ave. Hudson Valley Seed Common Ground is now for us K-five continuum, and so that's very exciting. We have students, Sharp Reservation is a fantastic trip for our fifth graders. We're fortunate to have walking field trips. We're in a great setting next to Main Street. We've had visits to Beacon Rec, Allen Library, Long Dock, Glazedover, Ballet Arts Studio already this school year, so that's been very exciting for our students. We're really focusing on music theater assemblies and we've had a lot of support through our own PTA. Just most recently, the arm of the Sea Theater came to South Ave and we had Sergeant actually join us for that assembly, which was great. I'll talk a little bit more about that. And we are going to start our fifth grade trip to New York City this year to start again the tradition of seeing a Broadway show, which is very exciting for us. And that was really spearheaded by our fifth grade team and getting that going. I'll talk a little bit more about that. And we are going to join Literacy Connections of Hudson Valley where we get book buddies joining our school for the first time, so we're very excited about that. Oh, and I wanted to mention a little about the middle right picture. That's when our fifth grade students went to the FDR Presidential Library Museum after they finished their Universal Declaration of Human Rights unit. So that was a great trip they went to. Ooh, here are some pictures. I forgot I added this picture just moments ago. Of some flexible seating options. So on the top left, you'll see a kindergarten student on like an unbalanced stool. The bottom of it is kind of rounded so that their core can kind of get a little bit stronger. Bottom left is a really great picture of students working together with student choice. One student chose to sit on a stool. One student chose to stand. One of our teachers, the middle picture, our teacher was very interested in trying a whiteboard table. And so on the easel in the back, she had a math problem and the students are actually writing their answers on the table with dry erase markers. What's really neat about that is the students can kind of get up, find a different position, check someone else's work. Just a neat way to kind of get that collaboration going. And on the right, we see some students choosing to work on cushions, clipboards, and then other standing desks. So those are kinds of every day in the life at South Ave.
I have a question. So the upper right seating, that's a, is that a...
You know what? It's almost like a beach chair where you can kind of click it and get the kind of angle you need and it just goes right on the floor.
Oh, it comes to the table?
Well, that's like a laptop tray almost.
Oh.
Yeah, it's not connected. They chose two different options in that picture.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Yeah. And then their friend, their classmates just above chose a clipboard against a cushion, you know? So I love that there's all these options for students. For equity, so we have a dignity team that wanted to look at the activities that we did last year and potentially investigate and think about things that we could do this year. One of the things that we talked about are multicultural fairy tales. So for example, three little pigs, three little javelinas. How can we use these multicultural fairy tales through literacy works to kind of talk about multiculturalism? We do all kinds of families presentation. This was a reference that Glisten of the Hudson Valley had sent to me. It's a very short video that talks about all kinds of families. So I, my dad is from Japan. My mom is from Germany. I live with my sister. I'm adopted. I have two dads and stories like that. And so it's a really great way for our school psychologists and school social worker to facilitate conversations about what families are like, the similarities that people have, and discussions about who we all are as a community. Again, we are really focusing on classroom and school libraries. So we really want to make sure that we have books with diverse storylines and characters and settings that reflect the students who are in our school. One of the things that we talked about as a team this year was the One Book, One School program. One of the teachers on our team and myself, our students, our children, go to a school where they do a one school, one book, one school. And it's really a really interesting way to kind of support a culture of literacy and get families involved. Everybody in the school will get a book. There are activities that happen throughout the day. And I think it's a really neat idea that somebody who has a fifth grade brother and their first grader are all reading the same books and the families can talk about it together. So that's something we're going to start in January. It goes for about six weeks, two months. New Muse Forte is a great group led by local musician Gwen Laster. Her group plays pieces by composers of color from the eighteen hundreds up until today. That's the top left picture there. And we're going to bring her back again, her group again, for the third year in a row. We've had a family picnic that we will have again for the third year in a row. That's the top right. Karen Pagano, Food Services Director, has done a phenomenal job of making sure that we have picnic-friendly menus that day so the students that need or want to choose to buy can have some great foods to bring on the lawn and yet the families that bring their little baskets and their bags can join as well. So that's a great event. Last year, we started a Day of Play and that was very, very well received. There are a few programs out there, the Global Day of Play Day, Worldwide Day of Play. But we, it wasn't a full day for us. It was after lunch. It was maybe a two, two and a half day of play. But it was a really great way for kids to lead in their own learning and their own fun. So what you see in this picture is on the bottom left is kids playing some board games. We'll connect four. Bottom middle, we still kept our schedule, so students may have had to go to gym, to PE, to music, or to art. And in that, there's a picture of music and of course the percussion section was a big hit. And so the students there are playing boom whackers. If you've never heard a boom whacker band, you haven't lived. It's almost like if you've seen Blue Man Group and the tubes playing. It was just a lot of fun sort of here, you know, a bunch of six-year-olds whacking those boom whackers at this one. Bottom right is just a group of kids making their own puppet theater and bringing in toys that they had. So that was a really great thing that will continue again. We've decided as a team to do one in the winter and then one in the spring. It was such fun. We're gonna do it twice. All right, communication. So I certainly am a fan of technology, sending out robocalls. That's something that I've gotten feedback from families that was very helpful to them. Send out among the newsletter. Teachers send out class newsletters, remember? And they might use Ramon Langmu's Class Dojo. We do have people that use Talking Points, which is an app that you can communicate in multiple languages. So that's been helpful for some of our families. We are on Twitter and Instagram. Actually, when Dr. Landall said that Instagram is exponentially clicked on over Twitter, I said I have to get us on there. So we're on both platforms now. We have connected with members of our community to have some visits via the Fire Department for Fire Prevention Month. Chief Gary and his team always do a great job in explaining what they do if they need to come into the home. They're a really great resource for us. The Beacon Police Department, Sergeant Alan Castro, the K-9 unit comes in and explains his work to us. Planned Parenthood does their fifth grade puberty classes with us. Last year, bottom right, we had the Grace Smith House come in to talk to our fifth graders about cyberbullying and social media. And that was a really, really well-received program. Our kids really enjoyed that. So we're gonna have them come back again. And also for the staff, we're gonna bring in Family Services to talk about domestic violence and the effect on students for our staff. Beacon Rec, bottom left, there's a picture of our students finishing up an engineering unit. They're getting to use the imagination blocks and build some big, big blocks at Beacon Rec. And of course, we do our parent meetings. We just finished our first fifth grade Broadway meeting with our parents. But we definitely have meetings to talk about events that are coming up, like Sharp Reservation as well. So our culture of care. So SEL, social and emotional learning is certainly the focus. And we want to make sure that we have responsive classroom routines going on throughout the school day in all of our classrooms. One of the things that we've done this year is had a Caught Being Kind bulletin board. In the past, we would have a Student of the Month or we would have Possum Awards with the Panthers. But that, that kind of philosophy of just picking that one person doesn't necessarily flow with our responsive classroom philosophy. And so we are doing a Caught Being Kind bulletin board where anybody can nominate anybody for what they see. So the head custodian could nominate a student, a student could nominate the school nurse, and we put them up on the bulletin board, which is fun. We do have, I started, it was called The Day, which is from a professional Twitter person that I followed, I learned from, a principal in Minnesota called Mark French. He did the Good News Call of the Day. It's on bottom right. You can see one of our students very proud to chat with the parents about getting that here call. At the beginning of the school year, we did something called Starts With Hello. It's from the Sandy Hook Promise. We put little blurbs on the morning news. I knew it was promoting connectedness and inclusion. We were doing multicultural greetings, word walls, so kids could put posted notes on the wall, positive notes, getting to know you. Really is to identify students who may be not as outgoing and kind of having them be included in the beginning of the school year. One of the things that our students are really, really enjoying is the welcome greetings. So you can kind of see bottom, middle, there's a picture that says Good Morning, where kids can choose how they want to be greeted in the morning. Shake hands, pinky shake, a little dance, a hug. And that's really a great way for teachers to kind of put their finger on the pulse of where their students are in the morning. And it's also a great way to kind of have a little whimsy and fun before you start your day. Teachers and TA trainings and faculty meetings. We certainly are utilizing the responsive classroom routines when we have our own meetings. And it's really important for me to make sure that everybody has kind of a feeling of what we expect to happen in the classroom while they do it themselves. And I think we were hearing from the responsive classroom teachers how, you know, when you're in it, you know, at first you're like, ugh. But then when you feel that you're a part of it, you definitely get that by an understanding of what the goal is. We've had some fantastic playground and athletic improvements this school year. We've had a new spinner and rock wall. Top right, that's from our PTA. That was fantastic. A new blacktop on our playground from Facilities, which really improved our kids' access to fun. And just recently, we had some new backboards and hoops in the gym. And I think we used to have sixty-year-old backboards. So this has been a great help. This goes up and down actually. So our primary and intermediate kids can actually make a shot, so that's very exciting. I do want to also add that we are very fortunate to have a connection with Common Ground Farm. We had a backpack program years ago where the person retired and Common Ground Farm absolutely took the reins and really helped us continue that program. So we're actually providing backpacks of food for families over the weekend with a lot of support from Common Ground Farm. Sustainability. So we want to talk about how we can have healthy school climate and improve educational programming. We had the Energized guys coming to the bottom left. We had the Energize Guys coming to the bottom left, come in to talk about, uh, big energy and concerning resources. And it was a free program sponsored by Central Hudson. Uh, bottom right, we have a color cycle program. That's where we can recycle and collect old markers, and that's through Crayola. We also have a bottle and can recycling program through A&amp;A Redemption. We have a South Ave tab. So if you ever wanted to bring your cans over to A&amp;A and just say, "Put them on the South Ave tab", we'll be happy to accept. All the donations go to our South Ave PTA. Uh, we do a South Ave Color Run, which is a great fundraiser that is open to everyone in the community. It's not just for South Ave families. Uh, there was a crop shop farm stand, which is a connection between Hudson Valley Seed and Beacon Rec. They partnered together to bring the shop to South Ave and to other elementary schools. Great fresh local produce and the Beacon Rec kids manned the, in the store, which was fun. We had a STEAM night, which was very, um, exciting for our families. We're very well-attended. Uh, bottom, middle, um, and the theme was the Hudson River. So you see in that picture there is a family trying to make a bridge that would cross over the Hudson River with the blue painting. And our STEAM committee reached out to Bard College and we had some college helpers that night, which was really great. And most recently, we had the Rejuvenary River Circus performed by Arm of the Sea Theater. That's the top right picture. That's the program that was brought to us through the Sargent and South Ave PTA, PTO programs. And Sergeant joined us and it was a really lovely program regarding restoring the Hudson River and the Hudson Valley ecosystem. Um, I do want to mention that there are two staff members at South Ave who have received grants that they went on their own to get. Aaron Burke, who is our library media specialist, received a NICE Skate grant. NICE Skate is the million New York State Association for Computers and Technology in Education. And he received a grant for coding drones. Some of our staff members might have learned a little bit about that at the, uh, last conference day. He's one of nine people in the state to get the NICE Skate grant, so we're very excited for him. And I want to acknowledge Danielle Wesley, who came here today. Uh, she is a SUNY New Paltz alum and connected with one of her professors who was writing a grant writing class, connected us with some people in the class, which led to us winning a $1,000 literacy grant for multicultural books, which totally goes hand in hand to our goal as a school. So we're very excited for Danielle to connect with her, uh, old professor and have that reflect on the bounty to South Ave, so we're very excited for that. So thank you.
Can I?
You're welcome.
No, thank you very much. You know, actually, so, uh, the ambulance go onto the Color Run last, uh, year last year. And there was so much positive energy that, that I, we couldn't help ourselves. We, in our uniforms, we just, we just decided to just get the, you know, what do you call when they throw color at you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last, last. Yes, it's a fun day for all. And while there's a registration fee, that's to get the T-shirt and all of the lovely kits. But there's certainly, you know, it's not, um, a money limit at all. And people from the community, I've had people who said, "We're, we're thinking of moving to the area. We just wanted to check out the Beacon Schools", and they came to that and that. So it's really a nice, uh, community night. A nice community day for us now. But we'll continue again. The traditions to continue.
I love the Good Call Homes, or Good Call Home.
What is, what is that?
Yeah, I, I hadn't heard of that before.
So typically, when a principal calls home, the response is, "Ugh", right? And this is really kind of to combat that. It's to, to call home when something awesome happened with a kid. And so the picture, that specific student, um, reached out to a student and come the student during the playground incident that really was above and beyond kind of getting involved and being kind to this person that he wasn't necessarily, uh, he wasn't in his classroom, he didn't know that person very well. So he really showed us a very kind and, and mature way of handling something that he handled himself with the peer. And so that's something that I wanted to make sure mom and dad knew. So I gave a call home, let them know. He was able to talk to his parents and it was just...
Oh, so you do it together?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I, I wasn't sure if it's a picture of him getting the call or...
When I did it, I, part of it is you are temporarily giving parents a heart attack for a few seconds. Before, it's like, "Surprise!", "It's all good".
Any other questions? Laura, thank you so much.
Awesome, Laura.
Okay, so, um, we are going to go into, well, I need a motion to go into executive session. To, um...
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the Department of Ministry of Public Utilities.
Do you have, Laura, is that you?
Second.
Um, comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Um, we will probably return at about nine o'clock, a little bit after. Thank you. Um, so I'd like to, everyone to stand for a moment of silence for Rolando Santavina, who retired after thirty years as a Spanish teacher at Beacon High School, and John A. Crowick.
Cravitz.
What was it?
Cravitz.
Cravitz. I actually Googled the pronunciation to try to figure out what it was, so thank you for that.
I know, yeah.
Who served on the Board of Education. Thank you. Um, reviewing the agenda, we have two additions. The first is, um, to the non-instructional list, item twelve point oh three C six has been added. And we're adding a resolution also to the consent agenda. Um, resolution eleven, or one one two, one two, one nine A. And it reads, "Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve administratively for employee number six nine four four pending a district investigation. Be it further resolved that the Board hereby authorizes the Board President to execute such an agreement on the Board's behalf." Are there any other questions about the agenda? Okay, are there any, um, school or student presentations? None, parent groups? Open to the public? Superintendent's report.
All right, uh, I'll just be quick. Wanted to, uh, again, thank the community for supporting Professional Learning Day last Tuesday. We had our teachers and TAs focus on a variety of activities, technology, um, curriculum design, assessment design. Our TAs had some specially tailored PED just for them that we actually partnered with, uh, um, NICE IT to provide. And so it was on, uh, dealing with challenging students and working on IP, so we were happy to provide that. Uh, I spent a lot of time in the drone workshops and that was fun. And, uh, they probably needed to kick me out after one or two sessions, but it was a really great day. Uh, thanks for Eric for putting all that together. Uh, and just a reminder, the Beacon Players performance is this weekend, uh, Rock of Ages. And I, they were doing a really nice rehearsal before the board meeting started tonight. And, um, for a teenager of the eighties, the songs really spoke to me. And I will, I will be there on Friday night and I'm excited, uh, very excited for the performance. And just, uh, lastly, a huge thanks to the teachers who led the workshop tonight. Um, it was something we did a little bit differently than normal. As soon as I threw that out there, they really ran with it in our planning meeting. And it was, uh, it was a nice way, uh, to start a meeting with a morning meeting. So thank you.
That was great. Uh, okay, board committee reports and comments. Grace?
Hi, everyone. Um, so Kalia is not here tonight because she's working with Beacon Players. So she sends her regards. She wishes she could be here, but they're busy working on that. I'm pretty sure they're already here than us. Um, today, all winter sports started, so the, all the gyms are occupied. Kids working very hard, it's very exciting. I have practice right before the summer show. Um, I just want to put an attention to, um, Glenham is having their first Veterans Day breakfast on November twenty-first, and they're going to have some guest speakers. And, um, my mom brought this home in the mail and she's a West Point graduate and a retired Colonel of the Army. So when she got this in the, in the, my brothers and sisters' folders, she was like ecstatic because, um, I know everyone tries, but there's not like always like recognition. So when she saw this, it was just like really nice. So she's going to go and, "Oh, have a great day" and everything. And lastly, um, every Thursday, I go and actually volunteer in Ms. Kent's classroom with her first graders. So I've had like firsthand experience with all the morning meetings and the Energizers and stuff. And the kids are so responsive and they, they just love it. And it's just great to see all like the seven and six-year-olds all happy to run around and interact with each other. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura?
Yeah. Um, so, I have a lot here. Uh, so I went to the, uh, the NISBA convention and I just wanted to, uh, talk about a few of my takeaways from the convention. Um, it was interesting to hear a lot of discussion in sessions about things that we have started to implement. And that was very, uh, encouraging. So there was a session on generating better board decisions. And, um, they really emphasized, uh, spending time during each meeting, focusing on your mission and your vision. And I feel like with workshopping our goals and sort of building our goals into our, um, presentations, we've really started doing that and I, I'm really enjoying it. And apparently, it's a good thing to do. Um, so, community engagement, um, this was, this really struck me, uh, this comment that somebody, one of the presenters made, uh, saying, "Students need opportunities to participate. They need a sense of community and belonging." Um, and there was a, uh, there was a discussion about a student who did a project in which she surveyed all of her classmates. And she felt, she found that students who feel noticed tend to participate in their school and not just, um, you know, socially but academically. And I really feel like, um, things that we're doing, such as homecoming and making kids feel like they're important and that they're, and that they're seen and appreciated, goes a long way in all facets of their life. And so that was really great to hear. Um, I think the most interesting speaker was, um, the East Ramapo Superintendent, who spoke during a session on creating a, a culture of equity. So that, her name is Deborah Wertham, and, uh, she had a really unique experience. Obviously, she, um, was pulling a district out of crisis in which almost all the schools were, um, under improvement. And it was interesting for, to hear her talk about, um, her big thing was reframing how. And she said, "Don't tell students that can't learn, that their zip code can't learn." And she said, "The heart of what you're supposed to do as a district is messaging to students that they matter and they have potential." So, um, to me, that's sort of our culture of care. So you can see, for me, it was all the warm and fuzzy, making students feel important stuff. It really got to me. But, um, I also thought it was great. The last session I attended was a farm-to-school session and I thought, "Oh, this will be interesting. I'll see, you know, what more, uh, what more we could do." And about halfway through, I was like, "We're killing it. Like, we're doing all of this and more." And so I just want to, um, thank Karen Pagano and community organizations like Common Ground Farm and Hudson Valley Seed, or Hudson Valley Seed and Green Seed for everything they're doing to make farm-to-table such a huge part of our curriculum and of our school district. And I have to say, like, we're really, we're, we're definitely a model for, for what can be done. And I love that, I love seeing that. Um, moving on to the wellness committee, we had a November sixth meeting. It was really well-attended, um, and there were so many, uh, great initiatives going on. And Dr. Roland sort of spiced it up by, uh, making sure somebody won a fall bouquet. That was the, uh, that was the start of the, uh, the meeting. He had us all reach under our chairs and, and, and somebody had a penny under their chair and they won. But it was sort of, it loosened things up and everybody laughed and, and it was a good, it was sort of a good way to, to warm up the room. Um, and it's just, I feel like his energy has been contagious and it's great to see. So we had representation from Rambout, from Glenham, South, Sergeant, uh, and Beacon High School. Um, and the big thing, uh, again, I've talked about this before, but it's worth mentioning again, is the USDA Farm-to-table Grant, which is a huge, uh, a huge deal. And right now, um, the focus was on the garden supplies, which have been ordered for Rambout. And the garden will be built by spring, so that's really exciting. Um, and then around, uh, the district, Hudson Valley Seed is putting all the gardens to bed. And, uh, I visited, um, a class at Sergeant and they were planting garlic. It was the last, uh, it was the last crop of the season. Um, and it was really cool to see because half the class, they were out in the garden and they were learning how to plant, how to, how to put everything, uh, get everything ready. And then they would go inside, the, the groups would switch, and they would go inside and they would use the smart boards. And they would draw the life cycle of, of the plant. And it was really cool to see sort of, um, nature and technology all being combined together and really seamlessly. So that was pretty cool. Um, I'll run through this really quick, or it's going to run really long. Uh, there are a lot of great things going on. There's, uh, a lot of, uh, scratch recipe, uh, making, uh, planning going on. Rambout, um, had some tastings. They're going to have some more throughout the year. Um, there's going to be professional development for teachers to integrate garden education into their lessons because they have the garden coming. Um, Diane Tanzi is a powerhouse at Beacon High School. There's so much going on there, I, I don't even have time to list it all. Um, but there's a family fitness coming up, uh, January seventeenth, snow date on the twenty-fourth. That's for K through eight. Um, and then some other cool stuff that I, I wanted to mention is that in, uh, the physical education department is talking about, uh, empathy and getting to know their students better. And I really love that, um, angle that they're taking. And I think that, um, it's going to be interesting to see how that translates. So there's a lot of other stuff, but you'll be able to look at it on the website because we're going to start putting notes on the website from each of our, from each of our meetings. And then the next meeting is December, do you know off the top of your head?
On your own, on the website.
I might, hold on, I might have it. December fourth, yeah, Wednesday, December fourth at four P.M. It's very exciting, you could win something, so come.
No pressure.
That's it.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Um, thank you, Laura, for your very thoughtful comments. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I don't have any other comments.
Thank you, Alyssa. Nancy?
Thank you. Good night. Um, so, just a couple of things that I've been experiencing throughout the community. Oh, and thank you very much for the responsive, uh, classroom exercise. That was actually pretty enlightening, um, and very positive. The, um, so the, uh, I went to a, uh, line strategic convention over the weekend and, uh, we're talking about Line Quest, Lines Quest, which is a emotional, social, emotional learning program for K through twelve. I'm not qualified to speak on it, but they were, um, asking me to give a presentation to the board or something like that, so I'm not sure where that puts it. I think before we've said that, we would just refer to them to Matt and they would, uh, Matt would then make a decision on that. So, um, then I went to the Veterans Day, um, ceremony at, uh, City Beacon at the, um, Memorial Hall there and, uh, wanted to thank the, uh, the boys and, boys, the boy scouts and the girl scouts there that were supporting the event. And then River Pool at Beacon, I don't know if folks know, but we do have a floating pool in Nutz River during the season. Uh, it was one of, um, one of Pete and Toshi Seaver's, um, projects that, uh, to give access to the Nutz River. And, um, so the River Pool organization still goes on. They, they're forming a, uh, a youth alliance, which is kind of like, um, uh, um, a program for, um, high school, middle schoolers to get involved in environmental, um, work as well as, uh, certain, um, business skills like marketing and stuff like that. So, um, that's what I've been seeing around the community for, um, for kids and, uh, that's what I have.
Maybe it'd be good to, um, get them in touch with the heads of the environmental clubs at the high school and the middle school?
Sure.
Sounds like there's some...
I, I, I would, um, I don't know them.
You could tell it to them.
Just, I mean, yeah, just maybe to let them know that that exists and then they can go through.
Yeah, okay. No, we, yeah, well, actually, I don't know all the clubs, so I don't know. I didn't know we had an environmental club actually.
Yeah, it's, um, new at the middle school too. And there is one at high school, yeah.
At the high school, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
They just started this year.
Okay.
Thanks.
No, thanks. Yes.
Kristen?
Uh, we have a Facilities and Operations Committee meeting tomorrow night. We'll be discussing, uh, the request for proposal submissions that we received for engineering architect, uh, services, um, as well as going through a, um, summary of... of building and conditions lists that were based on a survey that was done. And having been updated by the Facilities Department, we can start to prioritize what are some big projects we need to include in the next capital plan and small projects too. And that'll be tomorrow night at seven o'clock at the district office. Thank you. Also, just to echo what everyone else has said about the responsive classroom training. I think that, I always think of this cartoon I saw years ago where it's kids pushing adults into a room with a bunch of other adults standing around, and they say, like, "You're the same age. You must have so much to talk about." And I feel like there's so many things where we don't think about things from the, we talk about students here, but we don't think about their direct experience as much. And so, you know, it's good to be taken out of our comfort zone and sort of forced to live in their shoes for a little bit. And it was a very, I, I can see how that'll build a lot of community and connection and getting to know students and will foster a sense of belonging, which I think is our goal. Last week, I went to an event for Hudson Valley Seed. It was just great to hear all the things that they've had planned and how much that organization has grown, and to, to meet. There was a lot of lawmakers there, and it was really interesting to see this, on a state level, the support for agricultural, agricultural initiatives, and also these things that really connect kids to their, their local food sources. And I agree with Flora. I think we're doing so much to have fostered this within Beacon. It's really exciting. And Beacon was held up as a real example of a district that's embraced this. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Craig?
Thank you. I plan to go to the Rock of Ages musical Friday. Looking forward to that. And having attended the, the Earth State School Boards Association, pardon me, I don't like abbreviations, NISBA, if we say, that was worthwhile. It was interesting to visit Rochester for the first time since I can't remember when, and to see the progress in that city. So, the seminars I attended, I, I will summarize some of them in greater detail. There are some handouts occasionally that can be done digitally. There's an interesting possibility that we should probably talk about at Facilities, which is an environmental performance contract. The company that did our previous one thinks we are ripe for another possible program, and they might be giving us a pitch at some point. And she did remember Mrs. Corderoni's name. So, that might be coming in, having to do with solar options. So, we should give some thought to that. I did make the rounds of the trade show, and one of the things I was thinking about was our coming forth on the RFPs for architects, so I visited a number of architects. And at least two of them had decided to come forward, not necessarily because I talked to them, but I did encourage them, so. And then there's others that are just too far up there in the Rochester area to be of any interest to us. But I've got three, according to current listings, so that's a good response so far. There was an interesting proposal or seminar on threat assessment. And threat assessment isn't quite the same thing as security protocols. It's more about having a team of people who meet regularly to figure out who it is that might be likely to cause trouble and how you can intervene in a way to prevent it. And I'm not totally up to date on how far we've gone down that road. I know we've done some things. But it seems like some of these districts have gone into it in, in great detail and worked out of real protocols. We might be able to learn something from that. There's also a presentation about active shooters done by a security firm that frankly is quite chilling. They gave a detailed, moment-by-moment, play-by-play, if you will, of a famous incident. And the, the number of mistakes that are made, by looking at everybody else's mistakes, you figure what kind of holes you have to fill in your own program. Our former Lieutenant Governor, Robert Duffy, gave an interesting talk, saying he's spoken with many CEOs. He's running the Chamber of Commerce up there now. And he emphasized a point that I've heard made by others, which is that what business wants is student graduates who have the basic skills, that they, they can read and write and do math and know something about the world, and that they have soft skills as simple as getting to work on time, working in teams, taking responsibility. And if they get that, he says, "Boltise of the rest." Because you can't keep up with all the changes in what's happening in the job scene today. And one area where he says everybody seems to be fairly high-skilled isn't using information technology. They've got that down pretty good. There's a nice program on just about everything you can imagine, and I just wish I could have attended more. So, I hope to go to the one next year in New York.
Great. Thank you very much. For my part, I attended the Duchess County School Board Association meeting last week, and a couple of things from there. There is a Commissioner's Roundtable on December sixth from twelve, ten to two in Albany. I don't know who will be there, since I think the interim commissioner just gave notice as well. So, I'm not sure exactly what the state of that is. But if you're interested, email Mary Matheny, and it's first-come, first-served basis there. We heard from Micah Kenfield, who's the Director of Sustainability at Vassar College. And it was interesting, because in many ways, a private college and a public, small public school district do not, you wouldn't think have a lot in common. And certainly, their budget is very different, but kind of what, like what Flora was saying, we actually are doing on a small scale a lot of the things that they're doing. They're trying to have a certain amount of local food, connecting with local farms. They're, you know, they're doing other things like a hundred percent compostable cutlery, and, you know, just like at least twice as expensive as what we're doing. But, but it was still interesting to hear, and hear about Vassar's plans to decarbonize the campus sixty percent by twenty twenty-two. One thing that they said that I thought could be interesting for Beacon students is they're collecting data on all the work they're doing right now, and they really want it to be available for research projects and things like that. So, I don't know exactly how the science research project program is going at the high school, but I thought maybe we should just let that teacher know that that's available, because they seem very open to partnering with school districts.
I was thinking that with some of the presentations tonight. There are things that were brought up that are just ripe for being captured in terms of data that weren't falling under sustainability, but for example, South Avenue capturing their walking field trips. You know, that's something where they're not using buses, and they can talk about how far they traveled and how many buses they saved, and they could calculate, you know, how much gas they didn't burn. And there's all these classroom apps now. If we're able to capture data about how much we were spending on copy paper, you know, three years ago, two years ago, and this year, we'd be able to capture, you know, a lot of data about how much, you know, not only money is saved, but how much, you know, wasn't shipped. There's lots of ways of looking at that that they could start to, or even, you know, food coming from local sources. All of that fits into like a, like a whole picture. And people don't necessarily think of it as science, but that is, you know, behavioral science and also hard science of, you know, calculating carbon footprints and things like that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, maybe I'll just send an email that you can pass on or something, just to connect the two people. The other thing is, we decided we are not doing Legislative Breakfast this year. I had sent out a save the date, so I just wanted to let everyone know to open that date up to a brunch or something else. We decided attendance was too poor and didn't really feel that it was necessarily worthwhile. But we are gonna try to focus more on lobbying through the relationship we have with the Lower Hudson Education Coalition and their lobbying firm, Austro and Associates. So, we'll see how that goes. The other thing that I just wanted to mention is that at the next meeting, this, this guy, John Penny, from the Duchess, Duchess County Complete County Committee, is coming to speak about the impact of the census on public education. So, which I, I think will be really interesting. I'll just report back on that. And I think at the next Curriculum Committee meeting, I missed the last one, but the next one is sixth, fifth? Fifth? Fifth. And, yeah, that's it.
What time is it at?
Two thirty.
It's always two thirty.
Yeah. So, moving on to the Consent Agenda. "The use of the Consent Agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the Board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the Consent Agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all Board members to be heard on any issue." Are there any?
We added something to the Consent Agenda, right?
We added the resolution. Yeah. And there was, there was another addition from, to the non-instructional list.
So, what number is that?
The resolution?
Twenty-three?
I'm sorry?
Is there a number?
So, the resolution, we just gave it a resolution number. We didn't give it a, shouldn't, shouldn't we give it a Consent Agenda?
Twelve twenty-three.
Twelve twenty-three, okay.
Is it a matter of record that we have to read it or no?
I read it when we were reviewing the agenda, but I'm happy to read it again.
Okay.
Okay. So, does anyone have anything they'd like to pull from the Consent Agenda? Okay, so I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items twelve point oh one to twelve point two-three.
Someone?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
I, I do have a comment. I, I just wanted to speak to Craig's slide report about the, about NISBA. When I went, last year, I went to some of the safety-related presentations, which I had to remember when I left, that they were given by groups that wanted your business, that they want you to see the value in hiring firms that help you, you know, do these practices. And I just want to point out that a lot of the, according to the, the research that's been done by Sandy Hook Promise, a lot of the work that we're doing here, like the, instead of looking at like threat assessment, it's like we're, we're building community and connection and belonging, and like a sense of, we have added social workers. We are trying to make sure our kids feel seen, that they have adults they can talk to, that they see one another, that they're stepping in, that, that's part of our culture of care. That's actually a big cornerstone of the, a lot of the work that's being done by Sandy Hook Promise. And so, some of these things feel soft and a little, you know, sort of, maybe a little peace, love, and happiness sometimes, but it's very important work that creates community, that then creates a sense of safety. And I, I feel like we've done, I think we've put in a lot of the hard backbone of having done a security assessment and then used that to inform our practices. And I just want people to know that this work that we're doing is also creating a safe environment, a connected environment. And instead of having somebody get to the point where they feel so disconnected that they might act out, that they, they always have someone to talk to and connect with, and hopefully feel that they belong to just, to each other, to the other students as much as to the district as well. I just wanted to.
No, thank you, Kristen, for pointing that out. Actually, that's something that I think is sometimes easily forgotten. So, you know, I, I would prefer to act positively than negatively towards those fatal problems we're having. So, thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I feel like that alley at NISBA, I don't know if it was like this year, but that sort of.
The other people at the Duchess County School Board Association meeting said it was, felt very heavy on security.
I, I know that when I went to New York City, I burst into tears when I finished the walking through that one part of the zip code. I was like, "What is going on about locks and doors opening certain ways?" It just felt, it's not that it's not important, I just think there's other ways to come at it. And Sandy Hook Promise has spent a lot of money to, to get to the root of those problems. And I think we're doing a lot of the work that does get to them.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.